Good evening, this is the December 5, 2017 meeting of the planning board. It is a little after seven o'clock. And first on the agenda is a discussion with Mr. Chuck Black regarding the condition in the 2013 special permit, common driveway decision for 150 Church Street. Hi, Mr. Black.
Good evening.
What do you got going on?
So I'm Chuck Black, with Kendall Homes and the Reckings with Nate, who also owns Kendall Homes. And of course, we have built many homes in front of us in not all of these years. So the property, we have 150 Church Street, and the other address is over there, it's a common drive. We've built four homes, they're all occupied now. And Kendall Homes actually did the permitting of the project. That was done by John Grenier, the engineer, on behalf of the Orange and Brown Blank.
Gary Dutram?
Yes, you. And of course, you might recall that when I acquired the property, there was a very dilapidated home, and a whole bunch of dilapidated health buildings. So of course, we took all that down, and I like to think of what's there now as much more attractive and part of the town. And to be honest with the board, I did not pay attention to that condition that you were just talking about in the decision. I basically bought the property, said, "Okay, I've got permits and rights to build four houses. I'll go do that." The way I took it, we had done, I'd done common drives in the town before, and away we go. So, and we had our original cash bond with the earth removal board. I don't remember the exact numbers, I'm gonna say about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. That cash bond now is down to about ten thousand dollars. And working with Fred, the town engineer, you know, I wanted to finish the common driveway, topcoat it all, homeowners driveways, I've got the common driveway to finish topcoating. And so I was going to do the sidewalk in front of the property. You know, I don't recall whether Fred, I said to Fred, "Hey Fred, I'm gonna top this common driveway." He said, "Well, you gotta do something with the sidewalk." So I looked at it with my paver a couple of times, and Jean and I went out there on a Sunday and looked at it together. And I think the language in the decision talks about reconstructing sidewalk. And most of the sidewalk on Church Street, no improvement here. So what my paver and I wanted to do was we wanted to put a leveling course on the existing sidewalk, about one and a half feet. And then when we topcoat that common driveway, we're gonna topcoat the sidewalk. It'll then be aesthetically pleasing, it'll be functional, and certainly usable for handicapped people, walkers, et cetera. So in talking to Fred, you know, Fred's request or suggestion was that we rip out everything that's there, we put in an asphalt berm, we gravel it in, binder, topcoat, et cetera. So from Kendall Homes' perspective, that scope of work is grander than anything necessary. It's grander than my paving contractor thinks necessary. And there's not really a time crunch here, because now we're kind of in the construction season. I was hoping to do it in fall, but Fred and I weren't on the same page. I said, "Well, let's just chill out, we'll discuss it." So we're here tonight, discussing with the board, and I might be a little overreaching, but I'd like to say to the board, everything we've done in town has been beautiful. Give us creative license next spring to finish the job as we think makes sense. And we'll move on to the next project.
So I just have a couple of questions, and I don't know if the board does as well. The first question, and maybe Fred needs to answer it, is what is the length of the sidewalk area that we're talking about? I can see that it goes from the existing culvert to the eastern edge of the property line, but do you know how many linear feet we have?
It's approximately two hundred feet, I don't have the exact number, but it's about two hundred feet, which I believe was the frontage for each of the four lots. There was fifty-foot lots, frontage for each of the lots, I think it was about two hundred feet. Give or take.
So it's the sidewalk that pretty much just runs in front of the subdivision itself?
Pretty much, there's a utility pole, and there's a culvert. When I met with Chuck out on site, I had already talked to the DPW, the highway superintendent. We have a low point in Church Street where the water kinda runs across the sidewalk and into a wetland area, that we ultimately will have to add a structure for. And so that seemed like it was more than would be reasonable to ask him to do. So that was kind of the end of the work requested, so the water could still go where it goes now, but rebuilding the sidewalk in front of the property as agreed to with the planning board decision.
Okay. And so the decision does require repair and reconstruction, so the plans that have been provided to you don't comply with that requirement?
Well, actually, there is no plan.
Oh, you haven't seen a sidewalk plan?
No. The decision actually calls for a sidewalk plan to be presented to the DPW director for approval prior to the house construction.
Yeah.
That didn't happen. As Mr. Black indicated, he bought the project from the person who got it permitted, Mr. Dutram, which I believe owned the property at the time. And he somehow got a building permit from the building department without providing that plan. So when he indicated to me that he wanted to put the top on and finish up his project, I went back to the decision, reviewed the condition, and sent him an email, I believe, and said, "Look, we need to get a plan. I have your engineer submit a plan to the DPW director of how you're gonna rebuild and reconstruct the sidewalk, and we'll go from there." I then got, I don't know, it was a phone call or an email back saying, "You know what? Rather than do a plan, can we just meet out there and talk about it?" Which we did. And we looked at the scope from this utility pole that went in to the culvert, and thought we're all set at that point. He was gonna have his paver come out like later that week or the following week, and then after that, he decided that he didn't really agree with the condition, and then wanted to meet with the board. So I believe that's everything I can share.
And I assume you received a copy of this decision before you bought the property from Mr. Dutram?
I would say that I think when I saw Kathy, I was like, "Oh, I didn't look at that." But again...
When was that?
Just now. You know...
Last week, Chuck and I met out on the...
I'm not using that as an excuse, or whatever, but it wasn't something that either my attorney or the engineer of wreckage, John Grenier, boy doesn't hate Chuck. I just wanted you to know you had the scope of work. So until Fred brought it up, I wasn't aware of it. We are in agreement on the two hundred and a half feet.
Well, there's start, right? Just now we gotta work from there.
So that's fine. And the other thing is that although the decision calls for a plan, again, in my own personal opinion, not really any reason to re-engineer things and spend extra money on things. My reputation and my work speaks for itself. Let me go out, make the neighborhood more beautiful than it is.
I don't think anybody's challenging your reputation in town, that's for certain. I mean, you've done plenty of good stuff, and I haven't heard anything negative about any developments that have been put up. And I've only been here since '06, but for whatever that's worth, that's, your reputation's never been challenged, as far as I know, to me. Other planning board members may know differently, but I certainly do not. George, you weren't involved in this at all, right? You don't have any reason to recuse yourself?
No.
Oh, okay. So do you have any questions or...
Well, I guess I need Fred's explanation of... Well, first of all, I agree, we don't need a plan. And I agree that Kendall Homes is a quality builder and doesn't do any slipshod work, and they can be trusted. I guess I need an explanation of the two types of work. One work where they have to rip it all out, start again, and the other where we can, they can put a coating over it and then put a topcoat on top of that. And the approximate cost for each one, and why we do one and not the other.
And the longevity of one versus the other?
Yeah.
Well, I don't have a cost for you. I didn't do an analysis on a cost, it was a condition. It was no bond, because it's a special permit for common driveway, not a subdivision. The reason, let me back up just a little bit, the reason for the plan was to be sure we're in agreement with what needed to be done. When he said, you know, "Why don't we just meet out there and talk about it?", I said, "Fine." When we met out there, I gave him a detail of the curbing, that was kind of the important thing, that the sidewalk is quite broken up and dips quite a bit. It needs a fair amount of work. The reason that it's settled like that is that there's, the soil underneath is not suitable for building a sidewalk on. So just putting more pavement on top of what's already there isn't really reconstructing it. It's just putting a Band-Aid on, and eventually the town will have to do it anyway. The town will be doing other portions of Church Street as they work their way through town, but this was something that was seen as a, should be done as part of this development. And so the board approved that condition the way it is. What we're requesting that he do is to rip out that edge of the pavement and make sure there's a proper berm pad for the curbing to set on, and then make sure that there's good gravel behind that by taking out the old sidewalk and verifying that there's gravel underneath it, re-grading it so that you have gravel up to where the pavement should be, and then put on the two courses of one inch or one and a half inch of asphalt for the sidewalk. So just putting asphalt on top of what's there isn't a good solution. It's not something that we would do as a town, it's not something that we would want a developer to do for us.
So the kind of like sinkholes underneath? And if you were to take...
It's not sinkholes, but it's settlement that's...
It's not supported.
It's not even, it's not levels, because the soil is not suitable, not completely suitable. In some areas, it's better than others, so it dips and it will gather water and could potentially be a trip hazard. So the way we would do it when we were doing a sidewalk, as we did in other parts of town, Church Street, other part of Church Street and Pleasant Street, is you go in, you take it out, bring in the gravel, you bring it up, make sure there's a good berm pad, and then you put the sidewalk right up against the berm, because that's basically where it is, within a foot or so now. Makes more sense to put it right up against the berm, not have a little tiny grass strip, and then dip down to meet the, slight dip down to meet the common driveway, and then carry across. So the reason for the plan was to make sure that those details were discussed. And when Chuck said, "Let's just meet out there," I said, "Fine." He knows what he's doing, I know what I want, I wanted to explain it to him, but the plan, had it been done prior to the house construction, would have avoided some of this confusion and discussion now, after the houses are built and sold. And clearly, there's no, you know, there's no room left to make this money up to cover this, so...
You know, hopefully, I think all of you were here in 2013, and, you know, hopefully, and if you want me to provide you copies of minutes, I can, but, you know, there's quite a lengthy conversation with John Grenier at the time about that sidewalk improvement. And, you know, you felt strongly enough about it that you wanted it as a condition in the plan, I mean, as a condition in the decision. So that's why it's in the decision, and why it's, you know, the request was to have it reconstructed.
And Fred still, to this day, feels as strongly as you did back then, that it's the only way to do it?
I don't see any reason to change.
Okay.
So are you saying then that it's kind of standard construction practice in the town that when a sidewalk is buckling all over the place, you go in and rip it out and...
Well, yeah, it does, yes. For the town as well as for a developer, it doesn't make sense to just put some on top unless you knew you were coming back right away to do a more proper job later on. It's considered a temporary fix. So a permanent solution would be removing, verifying the gravel, grading, compacting, and then putting on two layers of asphalt for the sidewalk.
Question, Michelle?
Give me.
Anything else you would like to add?
I don't think so. So in this case, Fred, we're on with the earth removal board.
That's correct.
So, um, so actually, if I understand it, there is no bond for the site.
That's correct, the bond is not with the planning board, the bond is with the earth removal board, earthwork board.
I guess that I would say to the board, I'd like to see if there's some kind of a happy ending compromise. When I bought the property, again, I realize it's not a valid excuse, but I certainly never in my mind thought that I was ripping up your legal feet or sidewalk on Church Street. I certainly didn't damage the sidewalk as the way it was. And the whole rest of Church Street, a lot of it is like that, so it's like, why is this Kendall Homes' responsibility?
Because you bought into a contract that said it was, and we have a town engineer who's now saying that it's still required. So for me, those kind of, those two elements are kind of...
So again, there's a compromise to be reached, that would be wonderful. Again, we have luxury time, because we're not doing any work now, we'll just...
So I understand what you're saying.
Yep.
For me, as one of the people who run around this town, sidewalks are terrible.
Yep.
And so any opportunity that either the ZBA or the planning board has to have even just a small portion of them repaired, as a citizen of the town, I'm really appreciative of that. One of the, because having sidewalks like this only result in liability, potential liability for the town, so having them repaired makes sense, even if you're only doing little bits at a time. And for this board, in my memory, and I've only been here seven, eight, nine, eight years, I think, every time we've put something in as a condition, it's been with intent. And so in my memory, putting this condition in has been, would have been with the intent that we've gotta repair something that's really in bad shape. And although you weren't here to protest it, certainly there was somebody here before you, and you did buy into that. So for me personally, on behalf of all the other runners and walkers in the town, I wouldn't be inclined to agree to a change of this, but there's four other members on this board. So, do we have to take a vote on this, or...
This isn't a public hearing, Chuck just wanted to come in for a discussion.
Okay.
There's been no request to, you know, amend the decision. I mean, the appeal period is, you know, long gone.
Right.
So Chuck just wanted to, you know, ask for the opportunity to come in and talk to the board about it.
Right. I feel for you.
I know, I do, I really do.
I really do.
I feel for you, but I feel for the safety of the citizens of the town, more of them.
And you have any other comments or questions, or anything, George?
And I'm not proposing this, but the only compromise I see is to ask you to totally reconstruct to the same standards that the town would do, but maybe do a shorter business. I would personally vote against that, but that might be the only compromise I see.
Yeah, I know that. And I guess the other thing, and wouldn't conclude the project, but obviously, come springtime, if I wanna go ahead and do what I think makes sense over there, I guess the only, the town could say, "Well, you're not done, Chuck, we're not gonna release the earth removal money."
There may be other legal remedies available to the town than just holding back the bond. So, you know, I don't know, but certainly as a developer in this town, and somebody who has a really good reputation, I don't think that that's something you would do. I don't think you would risk your reputation to do that. I might be wrong, but I think you've got a lot of years of development ahead of you, so I think...
Yeah, I think that, you know, maybe what I would say, since we have luxury time, and you are a walker and runner, go by there and take a look.
I will.
And then we can always come back here again before springtime, construction season starts again.
Yep. But I'll tell you, in that area, I run in the street, because I don't, I won't run on that sidewalk, because of the condition of the sidewalk. But that's just me as a citizen in the town, you know, so I have my own personal concerns about the safety of that sidewalk, which I know can't necessarily translate into my decision here, but thinking about it in broader terms of all the other citizens in the town, would their concerns be similar to mine, and I think they would.
All right, well, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'd say if there isn't snow and you get a chance to look at it, please do. And as I said, we'll give this a buy over the winter.
Okay.
And...
Okay. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, you too.
Okay, next we have a continued zoning discussion for the 2018 town meeting. Do we have any update on the recreational marijuana?
Yep. What you have in front of you is a series of maps that we had talked about at the last meeting. So we had talked about showing you a three hundred, a five hundred, and a thousand-foot buffer, to demonstrate or not demonstrate that there are properties available in the highway business and the business south. And again, this relates to, you know, putting that, what I'm calling the third article in relation to the recreational marijuana, that would, in the event that the other bylaws prohibiting it didn't pass, that you need to put, you need to give it a home, and that third bylaw would do that. So if you look at the first map, the three hundred-foot buffer, the best way, or the way to interpret this is, the land that, or the parcels that you see in the gray, in both the highway business and the business south, that aren't cross-tatched, that aren't purple, but the gray ones, if you did a three hundred-foot buffer, that's, those are the properties that would be available. And the buffer is from, it goes back to the land use codes that coincide with, you know, and we would, obviously, the land use codes would be the same, but in the registered marijuana dispensary, the medical marijuana bylaw, the board had proposed three hundred feet, that there had to be a three hundred-foot buffer from certain uses. And that includes schools, childcare facilities, libraries, playgrounds, public parks, youth centers, public swimming pool, video arcade, or similar facility in which minors commonly congregate. So taking that and then applying that to the use code that Massachusetts uses, that all the assessors use, what we did was, the, again, staying on the three hundred-foot buffer map, what you see in purple, those are, those fit into the code of what you need to buffer three hundred feet from. So, you know, we have Walmart, we have Teamworks, Indian Meadows, it's a golf course, but it's a public facility.
Do you have to buffer from the gun shop?
No, it's not that it's, it's not that you're buffering from the gun shop, you're buffering from, you're buffering from a similar facility in which minors commonly congregate. And that, no, it's not the gun, that falls into, there's many categories, and retail under ten thousand square feet falls into that category. So this is, again, this is across the state. So these buildings where you see like Arminos, the gun shop, Harry's Machine Parts, those are all under ten thousand square feet.
Well, it looks like the gun shop under the three hundred square feet would be excluded anyway, because the three hundred-foot buffer around New England Baseball is gonna run right into it, right?
Sure, yep.
All right.
But again, it's not because, it's not because, I just, I put the, I didn't wanna just give you the codes, and I could just have left off the names, but I figured everyone's gonna know the names of the stores versus what the codes are. I mean, I work with the codes all the time, but it's not something...
Sure, I know what three twenty-two is, of course. I can't believe you would even question that.
So then you have this, you know, along the Westboro, Northboro Town Line, this tiny sliver, that belonged to the YMCA. It's not obviously physically where the Y is located, but it's part of the Y property. So that gets buffered. And then the Northboro Crossing, because there are retail establishments under ten thousand square feet that include, I mean, it doesn't matter to us whether it's a gun shop...
Jewelry store.
A jewelry store, or a bubblegum store.
Yeah.
We don't zone the particular use, it's the category of uses. So that's where, under the law, that's one of the things where you look at, is where, and restaurants where kids could typically, or could be. So that's why, you know, you see the Arminos and the gun shop, and Harry's Machine Parts, which is part of that building, the other part of that building is the adult store. And then you have the Mexican restaurant on Route Nine.
Okay. Did you already mention why Walmart fits into the category?
Because it's a...
Because everybody brings their kids there?
It's, yeah, because I think it falls, I think it falls into, because of, because of the merchandise that they...
Because it's, because they sell kids merchandise?
Yeah, because of the merchandise that's in the store, it's where kids could congregate. And then there's also Subway in there, you know, it's under ten thousand square feet, so.
Okay.
So these are land use codes. I mean, these, again, this is not something that's unique to Northboro. These are across-the-board land use codes, and these are, that's the criteria that you had in the medical marijuana bylaw. So again, when you look at the three hundred, the gray shows that there's plenty of parcels.
It's not solid.
Doesn't mean that they're vacant or available, or that's not what you need to really concern yourself with, that's not your responsibility. It's just the fact that there are, you know, spots where a use, this use could go.
So it wouldn't be considered effective prohibition if all the parcels are already occupied, or...
Correct.
Okay.
So I have a question before we turn the page. Some of these lots are partially within the buffer zone and partially without, outside, I should say, the buffer zone. So does that mean that the facility could go into the unbuffered portion of that lot, or is that entire lot now excluded?
It's, the entire lot would be excluded, the way that the bylaw was originally written for medical marijuana, that it's three hundred feet from...
That's a good question.
That it may not be located within three hundred feet of the following. The distance under the section is measured from the nearest point of the property line to the nearest point of...
So if the lot were big enough, they could subdivide the lot?
Correct.
And then that may be okay?
Yep.
This is the storage place up here. I don't know.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, that really only leaves a few...
There's a daycare.
Kathy, isn't there a, Amy was just saying this, behind Walmart, isn't there a daycare?
No, not now.
Wasn't there a scribbles at one point?
I think there was at one point.
But is it gone?
And now, yeah.
Okay.
This is the present code as of January 2017.
Oh, yeah, perfect, okay, okay.
The uses. But yeah, there used to be, like, I think it was a scribbles.
Yeah.
Now there's...
Cars and the...
Cars, and then there's some construction units in the storage shed, and, I mean, the storage facility.
So it looks like there's eight lots that stand alone in gray areas, by my count, that wouldn't require any subdivision in order to use them for this.
In highway business and business south.
In business south. In highway business, I don't see any lots that are...
Maybe one, there's one on the left.
There's one, two, so it's like, it's like...
Or even three, is this a separate lot, this little...
That little half circle?
Yeah.
It looks like it.
That must be its own lot, too, so that...
Yeah. And probably sits half in Shrewsbury.
That's actually probably part of the interchange.
It is.
Oh, okay.
The ramp from nine onto...
Oh, that's so deceiving.
So that's in the shape of it, because that's not a typical lot.
It would be kinda cool if that were actually a lot, though.
So if we dropped it to watch highway business, which I'd rather, but it looks like there's only two lots on the left?
Only one. Where's the second one?
Oh, I didn't know if that's square, within the square.
There's not two lots? Oh, yeah, 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 okay, there we go.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, it looks like two lots that are accessible...
This area is shown on here, but not on this one.
By only Route Nine, I guess.
No, that's, because that's behind the exit ramp, so it'd be accessible from Shrewsbury or Westboro, whatever sits back there, where the town is, right there, by Valentine Drive. Yeah, it's a YMCA driveway.
When you bump out the buffer, then it becomes, when you say it now has...
Valentine Drive, not Valentine.
No, because there's this parcel, these guys are on this parcel. So now when you go to five hundred feet...
So we go to five hundred, we got one, two, three, four...
This is...
This, this is, and this is...
One, five. So, at 500 feet, you only have five lots.
Yep.
At 1,000, you get nothing.
Right. So, so five, obviously, 500 brings it, you know, in a little more restrictive. There are still some lots available.
But only in Business South, nothing, nothing in highway business.
Yep, there still isn't highway business.
There's one down in the corner.
Oh, this one, little, a little one. Well, not the two, just the little one.
There's one now.
The tiny little, and then, if you go to 1,000, and again, what you had before was 300. But I just wanted to, you know, give you, we talked about these parameters. So, you go 1,000, and it's, there's, there isn't any possibilities in either zoning district.
Okay.
I would be inclined to go with 300 feet in highway business, try to stay out of Business South, because I think that's going to be the real...
So, we're giving two lots in highway business and the opportunity to subdivide in highway business.
Do you know what's on those two lots right now? I'm trying to picture them.
They're hidden from...
These two.
Oh, no, that's Route 20, okay.
They are...
Cross under Route 9.
Right, yeah. One, one is the former gas, well, it's, it hasn't been a gas station in so long, but it came down within the past couple of years. It used to be a blue and white abandoned building, right after the kind of entering Northboro sign. And there's nothing there. And then the other, I think the larger lot, we think is the porta potty business.
I didn't know we had a porta potty business.
There's a couple of, in Northboro, oh.
Kathy, where is that on here? Is that, as you enter into Valentine?
Valen, Valente.
Valente. The, it's, if you, okay, you see, you see the red line that's, that's Route 20?
Uh huh.
So, to the, to the right of the red line?
Right.
That... There's a lot of Route 20 right of way and Route 9 right of way. But the one that's almost a square, that's available. And then the one next to it, which I believe they can also get to that, no, they can't get to that from Route 20.
Are you talking about these, Kathy?
This one.
It's right here.
These two lots, or two lots that are available in highway business.
Yeah.
So, was your question, how do you get there?
Right, because you come off of...
Certainly, because it seems to actually cut...
Right, climbs up the hill, yeah.
Doesn't, we don't know what this is, if this goes around like this.
Oh, that's the entrance. This is, this is the Christmas tree shop, so you come up and wind up the hill this way, and that's how it goes.
I, I don't, I don't know that I've ever been up that road.
Oh, okay.
It heads up to that new development in Westboro, right?
So, Kathy, I think this little line here, the very small part of the page, is the entrance.
That's the Valente Drive.
Right.
Where it goes off the page and comes back on. And then that, directly across from that is the Christmas tree shop.
Right. So, so that larger, the larger of those two lots would be accessible from Valente, and then, or from, maybe from Route 20, no, looks like there's a town on state land there.
Well, they, but they have, there's a dri, it's not a driveway, the, I mean, they, they, you can get onto those properties.
There is access.
Like I said, there's, yeah.
All right.
There, whether they have an easement, I mean, it's been there forever. You know, where the, that old gas station, auto shop, I don't know what it was.
Yeah, the, their grade meets Route 20, so it's flat there, you can just drive off. There's a driveway opening there, and then there's a connection between the two. But as you go along the ramp from 20 back on to 9 east, there's a very large stone wall, and the state has it as restricted access, so you can't, and it goes up vertically from the wall.
Right.
There's no access to the state highway along the ramp and just prior to it or just after.
Okay. So, Leslie, you, you like 300 feet highway business?
That would be my inclination, because I think in terms of community, lack of a word, better word, outrage, I think Business South is going to be a real strong...
There actually are a few residences down there.
Yeah.
And it does get pretty close to, backs right up to subdivisions.
Right. So, I think in terms of acceptance...
Okay. George, how do you feel?
I would include highway business and Business South.
Okay. 300 feet? Amy?
I like highway business, 300 feet, as long as that doesn't get us into any trouble where they're moving on further within the town. But if there's two lots, that covers us, that means we're not being too restrictive.
Right. And remember that some of these lots in highway business, to the extent that they are large lots and not covered by the buffer area, they can be subdivided if the owner so chooses. So, there's always that opportunity. Michelle, how do you feel?
I agree, highway business, 300 feet.
Okay. I'm in agreement with that as well, at this point, so...
All right, so I'll, I'll draft the bylaw. I mean, again, it's going to be, you know, the same as the medical marijuana, but but using the highway business and the 300 feet.
And so, and just to clarify, just so that anybody who's viewing this tape understands, that we're trying to pass a bylaw that actually eliminates the sale of recreational marijuana. But to the extent that that fails, we have to have something in place to zone it, so it has somewhere to go.
Yep. Because of the way...
This is part of the backup plan.
Right. Because of the way the ballot question was written.
Okay.
Being silent on it is, is, means that it's allowed. So, you either have to specifically prohibit it or specifically allow it.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on the marijuana issue? Okay. So, the next thing on the agenda is a special permit language update. And Kathy's given all of us a copy of an email from Barbara J. St. Andre, who is one of our attorneys over at KP Law. And I had the opportunity to read it, and basically, she's advising us to not move forward with the special permit issue. And what we can do is, you guys can, my suggestion is that take it home and read it and understand it, because there's actually a lot in here. But at the, at the end of the day, what I pulled out of this is that at its very core, the Constitution allows the free alienation of property. You can't restrict somebody from doing that. And one of the basis for the decisions that are cited in here is that when you have a special permit, it runs with the property, because the property, changing the owner doesn't change the ability to use the property. And if, so if I put up a restaurant, or if I put up an apartment building, change of ownership doesn't affect the ability to use that land in that way. And it impedes on the owner, original developer's ability to sell that property for what it's worth in its current use as a restaurant, or an apartment building, or whatever. So, these cases tend to state that you can't restrict the sale, or you can't restrict the use of the property to the owner only, except in extremely limited situations, one of which is where you have a radio tower permit must be renewed every three years due to safety concerns. That's something that is, the ownership of the radio tower and the permit itself runs to the owner of the property, because the, that, that particular owner owns the permit. That's my assumption, without having read the entire case. So, in that particular case, it makes sense that it would run with the person. The new owner in that case would need to get their own permit, and if they're denied the permit, the tower comes down. But with respect to the use of the property for, whether it's a car dealership or anything else, the use is particular to the land, not to the owner, and therefore, we can't really restrict it. Did I get that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yep.
So, so that's how I've interpreted this, and so she's recommending that we not move forward with that potential zoning amendment regarding the special permits, because it's not going to hold up. And we don't really want a bylaw that's not going to hold up.
So, I mean, that's all I, I mean, I can take note and read it, but that's all I need to hear.
Excellent.
I'm good with that, so. Trust your legal opinion, and I certainly trust KP Law's legal opinion, so...
Absolutely, I trust KP Law to give me the right, the right information. I just look at it as, like, from a constitutional perspective, you can't restrict somebody's right to alienate their property. By prohibiting them from selling the property in its present use, you could potentially be doing that. Thoughts, George?
I think your summary was right on.
Amy? Thoughts from this side?
I just want to read it.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yep, good. Okay, so there's that. And then, we've got some new minutes from September 14.
Did not ten comment in, but I, I read it right before I came here, and they looked great to me. There were two periods, other than that.
I took those off.
And that looked perfect.
I did, I saw that.
I had one potential change on page four. Probably the first full paragraph. Mr. Campbell said he's not opposed to marijuana. I think I was supposed to say, medical marijuana.
What did she say?
What page are you on?
Page four, up near the top. I think it's the first full paragraph.
You're not opposed to marijuana? You just want to make sure we know you're not opposed to marijuana.
I didn't even catch that, George. I thought it was quite accurate.
Oh, yeah, I think it makes sense for the rest of the sentence, though. I'm not, I'm not sure. Okay. Any other changes?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Oh, I haven't heard from the other half, the other half of the world.
Sorry, sorry.
On this side of the equator, long changes, no, Michelle?
No.
Okay, go.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 13th, 2017 Planning Board meeting.
As amended.
All right, all in favor? Aye. What else do we have, Kathy?
Just wanted to quickly bring you up to date on the ZBA filings for January 23rd, which is their next meeting. There was an application for a use variance for 222 West Main Street, which is the corner of West Main Street and Lincoln Street, right next to the Beaumont. And, right, it's the Red Barn and the White House, I think it's White House. So, that application has been withdrawn. And the other two applications, we still haven't received revised applications yet, but there's still time. But 89 West Main Street, and actually, Michelle, they've requested, they sent in some revised drawings. They've requested a design review committee meeting. So, 89 West Main Street, that's the former Unisign, right next to where Northboro Fitness is. And then, 200 Bartlett Street is an existing, although they, they went in without a permit, and so we're having them come in to, you know, make it correct. It's a landscaping operation down at 200 Bartlett. So, those are the two that, we still have time for someone else to file, but those are the two that we believe are coming in. There may be a third one, which is just a house addition.
The application was withdrawn, is it permanent, or they're just reworking and planning to come back?
Well, it's Tony Abou, who is the owner of 222. And Tony has, you know, three or four ideas that he's, you know, sort of, you know, considering for that property. It's owned residential, he already has an approved A and R for five lots, I think it is, five or six house lots. So, he's looked at single family, he's looked at duplexes, and then he was also looking at commercial use. So, but that, the commercial use is the one that he's withdrawn. And he withdrew it without prejudice, I mean, which is, you know, the proper thing or the correct thing to do, so that in the event that he wanted to reconsider that, or someone else down the line. But, but he's withdrawn that.
Thank you.
Kathy, so I was surprised to get your email today about 89 West, West Main Street on the height. And I just wanted to, because I remember, they want to go up four stories on that small lot.
They're calling it ground plus three stories.
Plus three stories.
But if you look at the plan, it's, you know, there's four stories.
And do we allow, isn't there a height limitation down?
That's one of the things that Judy Barrett was saying, in this town, we have no height restrictions.
But, see, I remember when, you know, actually, this is the first time we met you, when you came to the library, and Rick Riff was the chairman of the board, right? Maybe we just didn't pick it up when we did the whole rezoning thing, but Teresa came and talked about...
I did talk about height restriction on Business.
On Business South.
No, this is West. Even downtown Business.
Okay. In Business West, I remember Teresa and a group of residents came forward and said, "We don't want to see three stories out near where Ace Hardware is and stuff, we'd rather two stories." We had lengthy discussion and...
Yep, that's all been added into the, including, including in this district, it's 45 feet.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't, I'm not, I don't know how they measure it.
Right. But on down, this is considered downtown?
It's in downtown Business.
With no, is there a limitation on the...
Forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet.
I think it was just residential, but we don't have any restrictions, right?
Right, it's residential.
Yeah.
It's not commercial.
And highway business, actually, there's no, there's no height limit. They, they have parking in front, and they have parking in back.
I just can't imagine four stories in that little lot. It would be like a tower.
Yeah.
But we'll look at it.
Which lot is it?
It's the, it's, yeah, four stories.
Where is it?
The Unisign.
Oh, that's, oh, right, yeah, no, I know it, oh, wow. Yeah, that is crazy. But maybe it'll distract from the Boost Fitness. And again, it built it into a hill, you know?
Yeah. So, the backside will only have three stories?
Yeah.
And is that where, is behind that, behind that's not where they put the townhouses that sit really high above?
No, no, that's down, that's down the street. Behind, behind this is the, I was going to say Tall Pines, that's happening, Assavet Hill subdivision.
It's on the corner of Monument Drive. And one that you're talking about is on the corner of Westbrook.
Westbrook, right, okay. And is there a way to get them to connect the sidewalk to the missing sidewalk that's up the hill on Boost?
We can't, we can't do that anymore.
You can't have...
No, we're not allowed to do the sidewalk stuff anymore.
No, 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 not just as, as in front of their property, because the land, the, the land abuts it, doesn't it? Aren't they neighbors?
We, well, yes, well, a couple of things. We, we don't, I think in the, in the big picture, we don't want to, I mean, that sidewalk doesn't meet any kind of accessibility regulations. The, the, the issue that has developed over the past few years is that Mass Highway is, is all in favor of, of us building sidewalks, the towns building sidewalks on their roads. But they are asking the towns to sign a waiver, that the town is now going to be responsible for maintaining it, you know, plowing it, fixing it, you know, any liability. And the town is unwilling to, and rightly so, is unwilling to accept that responsibility. So, therefore, the developers, we ran into this in front of, it's a children's dentist, I...
137.
137. Where we required them to put in, a part of their, their site plan approval was to put in a sidewalk, and the developer agreed to it, it was great, it was all designed. And then, that's, that's the first property where Mass Highway has enacted their, you know, jurisdiction to say, again, you can build it, you know, on, on our road, but we're not taking care of it. And, and the town has to sign off on it, and, and saying that we'll accept the responsibility for the maintenance and, you know, everything going forward. And like I said, that, you know, the town and towns, it's not just us, you know, are not willing to do that. You know, it's just, it's not, it's not good business to do that.
Can I just ask a question? On the sidewalks are cleared up and down Main Street, and that Mass Highway does that?
I don't know who clears the sidewalks. I honestly don't know. If it's the town, the town does.
Oh, okay, so it's probably not snow removal, but it's more like pavement and curb cutting and things like that. Who plows the road?
Anytime there's a curb cut on a state highway, a state access permit is required. The state makes the applicant, whoever wants to get it, come to the town. The town signs the permit, and the state issues the permit. The town does the oversight on it, and then has to let the state know that it's all done. What Kathy's referring to is that section in front of 137 that we, the ZBA Planning Board required a sidewalk, was isolated. It wasn't attached to an existing sidewalk. And so, the state said, "Well, that's fine, but we're not going to maintain it. You want it, you got to maintain it." The DPW said, "Well, we don't maintain any sidewalk up to there, it's not connected to anything. We're not going to go down there and take care of one, a couple hundred feet of sidewalk in an area that, where we're already traveling." So, they said no. But the town does... But the town does plow the sidewalks in the downtown area along Route 20.
But this would be different. This would connect to already an existing sidewalk.
There, there isn't, um-
There's not a sidewalk on that side of the street.
Right, there's not a sidewalk in front of Northborough Fitness and the Something Grill.
So, they're not taking that up?
Hillside Grill.
It goes up.
Not really a sidewalk.
Right, it's not the sidewalk that was designed and approved on the plan.
Well, nothing, the whole building. Want to get me started on that?
And then, at, you know, it's no longer, uh, you know, viable or valid, valid. But, you know, at the Pierce Gas Station, you know, there is a requirement, you know, to, I mean, there, there, I think there's an existing sidewalk there now. We asked him to fix the issue in front of Northborough Fitness. That was a condition.
The thinking at the time was that the Pierce Plaza, the, the gas station, was seeking a permit to build mixed use. And because when the state rebuilt the downtown area, they put in a sidewalk, a concrete sidewalk and granite curbing along Route 20 on that, on that side of the road across from Dunkin' Donuts. So, the thinking was that because that sidewalk had already been placed, we'd ask them to do a similar amount in front of the next property down the street, which was the Hillside Grill, which would put it down at a usable elevation as opposed to the one that's kind of hanging in midair in front of the Hillside Grill and the, which would then connect to this one at 89 West Main.
So, just out of curiosity, Kathy, do you think this applicant is asking for any variances or anything, or?
Oh, that, like I said, that's, I have what you have, Michelle. They have not resubmitted their application, they have not resubmitted, um, they, they haven't revised their application yet. They're looking for some feedback on this, this initial revision.
So, I was just going to throw it out there. Is it, is it possible where, if there was, that then they could ask them to put a sidewalk in front of their place plus the Boost place? Would Mass Highway approve that? Like a new sidewalk all the way connecting down to where?
I, I think the problem is you can't ask them to put a sidewalk in front of somebody else's property anymore. Right?
The reasoning that we asked for it in front of the Pierce Gas Station was because the state had already put the sidewalk there. So, therefore, we weren't going to ask them to rebuild the sidewalk. So, we asked them to do that like amount next door. But this property at 89 doesn't have a sidewalk in front of it. So, they, the reasonable thing to ask them would be to put a sidewalk in front of their property that then turns the corner and blends into whatever sidewalks on Monument.
Right, because you know, it's going to be a shame. You know Pierce Plaza is going to be developed, and you know somebody's probably going to do-
Somebody someday, yes.
Is going to maybe hopefully do the sidewalk in front of Boost, and then, you've lost the opportunity to decide.
Now, in, in a much bigger conversation, a couple of years ago, when, when the, because we're, we're talking about, well, I'm about to talk about two different things, but it all relates to sidewalks. So, we have the, the, the access permit, you know, and the issues that, that are between the state and the town in, in, you know, trying to, you know, continue these sidewalks and who's going to be responsible. And then, we have the other issue of where, you know, the boards used to, you know, you know, work with the developer and, and receive some, you know, either in-kind services or donation towards a sidewalk fund. And that practice had to stop due to the auditors. But, so at that time, that was probably about two or three years ago. And at the time, the town administrator did say, knowing that there had been, you know, a fund that the DPW had, you know, used on and off, that what, what we need to do going forward is to have a sidewalk, to develop a sidewalk plan for the town. And then, he would start to make a, you know, routine capital improvement at appropriation at town meeting. So that, you know, every year, X amount of dollars would go into this sidewalk fund. And then, the town would, you know, then end up, you know, bidding it out. You know, so that we could get sidewalks constructed. So, that's, you know, that's on our to-do list, to do this overall sidewalk plan for the, for the community.
The sidewalk plan should be part of the master plan.
Uh, yep, yep, actually, it, I mean, it should, I don't, I don't know that it, yes, yeah. The short answer is yes.
I know that heading of transportation.
Yes, yep, transportation and circulation.
Kind of thing, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep. Do you have an update on the master plan?
The, um, well, we've hired a firm. Did I, did I say that at the last meeting? I can't remember if we, okay. So, we've hired the firm of VHB. And so, they, right now, we're just, we're working on the contract. It's, it's not that it's complicated, it's just a, you know, timing going back and forth between each, each party. And so, actually, the Assistant Town Administrator and I are meeting on Thursday to try to finalize that. And then, we'll, you know, start the, the, the public process, you know, in January.
Perfect. Oh, good. So, when do you think they'll start meeting? Sometime February, March?
The, the, in their particular proposal, the, the way they presented it to us was that they, sort of their, not their, their formula, but I mean, how, how, how they work with communities is, like in a 12 to 18 month project, it's an every other month meeting. And then, with, you know, but it's, but it's, you know, again, they, they're going to individualize it to, to the community. So, yeah, well, I don't, so I honestly don't know, Michelle, yet, whether it be, you know, January, February would be the first, you know, meeting.
Anything else from this end?
I did. I just wanted to bring up one thing, and I was thinking about for this year's town meeting. And I know it's kind of late. But one thing I've been thinking about is, you see a lot of those signs popping up now with the lights. And there's one now down near Remains for a dentist's office. Are those allowed in the downtown, too?
You changed the zoning bylaw a couple of years ago.
Because I have a new, I have the zoning bylaw from 2015, but maybe that's old. I was trying to see where in the zoning bylaw.
It didn't sign, did we change signs last year?
Mm-hmm. Did, I, I, yeah, I forgot, well, I can find out what year it was.
Just because, like, everybody talks about they want the classic downtown and this and that, and make changes, and what's happening to the character of our town. And I know it hasn't happened yet, because we have one that was proposed down in Business East and one in Business West now. I'm just afraid they're going to move down through the center of town, and it will be too late to go back. Like, I went to a design review once, and Mr. Barrett was there, and he said Marlboro doesn't even allow them because they didn't want Marlboro to start looking like a Vegas strip. And I really don't want Marlboro to look like a Vegas strip.
They're a strip of Route 20 at the Marlboro line. It looks like the Vegas strip.
I know, but I mean, I just don't think that the big electronic signs go with the character of the downtown.
Sometimes I actually, I was mentioning this to Kathy at a design review. I feel like the pitch of, or that the, the light is too-
Bright.
Too bright. It's, it's almost like if they could tone it down, they'd get the same effect, but it's almost, and I noticed this as I was driving by, even the illumination from St. Bernadette's as well. It's almost, it's too, too bright.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they can electronically tone, sometimes you even get that at the one down at, um, I don't think you get it, the one at the, the sign at the railroad tracks, because that's an older sign. But, you know, it's the new signs, I don't know if-
And they're getting more animated. Like, I noticed that next one down there is getting a little more, like, I just, I would like to have it not in the downtown.
I agree, I don't like them either, I think.
Yeah, I just, I don't think it fits with the character of Marlboro.
You just changed the bylaw.
I didn't know we had that effect, though.
Could be the whole same thing where we, everybody asked for the buildings to come up front, and once we did, they said, "We don't like it, put them in the back."
Right. Well, we, we don't allow neon signs, though, right?
Or flashing.
No, I think neons, I think, um-
I see number four, it says flashing, moving, and animated signs are prohibited.
Yeah.
I think, I think neon is, you know, is an allowed one.
I actually think it's the way that they're, especially that one. I mean, I don't mind, it tells me what the temperature is, and it's a nice little smile on it. It's a positive message coming across. But I can understand, I just think at night, it's the one, the only one, and it does sort of just pop out at you.
Right, if it, if there's not other illumination on the street to sort of soften that brightness.
And that's what I noticed when I drove, when I drove by St. Bernadette's in the first time, I thought, "Wow." But I, then I said to myself, "That was, that was the only thing. It's all dark around there."
Right.
And it sort of pops out. And that's why I think when I talked to Kathy about it, was the technology that you could tone it down a little bit? Or is it, that's just the way it is until other signs similar to it?
Are the words illuminated? Or it's just like a accent light, so you can actually see the words on a regular?
No, no, it's one of those, yeah, it is electronics. Those LED.
I just think that's like a Route 9 thing. I don't think it's a downtown.
You changed it in 2015, is when you added it to the zoning bylaw. And, um-
It's time to change it again.
I just want to take it out before it's too late.
You, um, you allowed it in downtown business. In Business East, Business West, Business South, highway business.
What page are you on?
Um, it starts with, on page 102.
Because I couldn't find. But I, I think I only have one that says, well, includes 2015, so, sorry. What, what section are you in? Section G?
Yep. It's right under 1A, 1A. May have an additional 16 square feet of space for changeable copy message. And then, that's, then, then that's, you know, carried through while the business districts.
Is that what that is? Changeable copy message?
Yeah. Yep. That, and you, you brought that about because you were, um, for, for years, had a lot of angst about the, um, yeah, the sandwich boards and the temporary signs. And so, you talked about changing it so that they could have, you know, so that people could have their freestanding sign, but also, at, you know, have a space to advertise sales changes, what, you know, whatever.
Why am I still seeing those sandwich boards?
Well, Bob, if you notice, Bob does a pretty good job of collecting them in his car and bringing them down to the highway business.
There is one, um, there is one lot in particular that I see a sign on all the time, all the time.
You know the address or the business?
I do.
And I can, okay.
I do.
Okay.
Tell you later.
Yeah, okay. I can-
When I read changeable message sign, I didn't think it was illuminated message sign. I pictured a sign where, you know, people change the letters and-
Oh, like the computer place where they're always missing a letter or spelling something wrong? No, we had, um-
Then it makes the, the town look dumb, not bright. I don't, I think I'd rather have it look bright.
I just would rather, I'd love to take it out of downtown business, because I feel like we're trying to go in one direction, and this is going to go in the opposite direction.
But I think CVS has a small message board on the bottom that's electronic.
Is it, but, I don't think it's electronic.
It is.
It is.
You can advertise Scott Towels for $1.99 for six bucks.
Yeah, and I know that we had this discussion with Cumberland Farms when they were coming downtown. We said, "What will be on your little message board?"
Yeah.
And they said, "If we need to just change the, the rates." I think what happened was, is that, again, I think it's that maybe there's more light downtown, but when you go to the other areas, it's really dark. Down by Remains, it's the only thing that pops out. I don't know, I, I see, I know what you're talking about.
Well, so for the dentist's office, particularly, in particular, it's actually the whole sign that's like that, though, right? As opposed to a specific, I mean, I envision the same thing. I envision a normal sign, and then a little area for a changeable message, not the whole thing to be.
I think he has, I, I honestly don't. You know, again, you drive by something six times a day, and you don't. So, I think he has his address, his, his business and his address, and then the, the changeable sign, I think.
Yeah, because then it comes up with the message about, like, a new dental treatment, and then, of course, I always look for the weather for the day. And then, it's a little sunshine, and then, you know, rotates.
Always a smiley face?
It's always a smiley face.
No, no frowns, huh?
He's a smiley, he's a dentist, he wants people smiling.
And the teeth showing in his smile?
You know, I don't know about that. Do you know, do you think it shows?
No.
No, I just know it isn't something I want to see spreading. I just, I just feel it's going in the wrong direction.
I think the problem is, is that if they do come, they'll probably ask for a variance for it. Because in the classic case of CVS, I know CVS is not, like, put the letters up like you're saying. It's actually an electronic sign, like, the high school has an electronic sign now.